Do we have any kids out there who want to do the pledge of allegiance for us? Do we have any volunteers? One, two. Come on up.
We'll do it with you.
We'll do it with you. Oh, you'll do it? Okay. Come on up. They got a volunteer. If we could all stand.
You want to come up here?
Come up here. And there's the flag. It's up right there. We'll put the heart, or your hand on your heart. And you go ahead and start.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Get her application in for city council. Perfect. At this time Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent, but is on via Zoom. And Leah, if you could explain?
Yeah, just briefly, Councilmember Wong won't be able to participate in deliberation or votes, but is tuned in.
Thank you.
Quorum is present. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We do have some presentations tonight. And the first one that we're always excited with, every year we get a good group of kids who do the fire prevention posters. So I'll turn it over to our Fire Chief Jason Mallinger.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having us. It's a really exciting night. As you can see, we've got some kids out here that have done some pretty amazing things. And we're going to acknowledge their achievements. So with that, I'll get started. So every year, the North St. Paul Fire Department works hard in the community, teaching fire safety and prevention. This year, we also celebrate the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week. Not specifically in North St. Paul, but nationally, the National Fire Prevention Week. This year's campaign, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, works to educate everyone about the simple important and actions they can take and those around them to keep safe from fires in their home. Today's homes burn faster than ever. You may have as little as two minutes or even less time to safely escape a home from fire the time the smoke alarm sounds. Your ability to get out of a home during a fire depends on early warning from smoke alarms and advanced planning. Assistant Chief Fixon and firefighters that assisted him talked about how it's important for everyone to plan and practice home fire escapes. Everyone needs to be prepared in advance so they know what to do when the smoke alarm sounds. Given that every home is different, so that they know what to do when the smoke alarm sounds, every fire escape plan will also be different. Have a plan for everyone in the home, for children, older adults, and people with disabilities that may need assistance to wake up and get out. They shared other key facts, such as smoke alarms should be installed inside every sleeping room, outside separate sleeping areas, and on every level of your home. Smoke alarms should be interconnected, so when one sounds, they all sound. Know at least two ways out of every room if possible. Make sure all doors and windows open easily. Have an outside meeting place, a safe distance from your home where everyone should meet, and practice your home fire drill at least twice a year with everyone in the household, including guests, and practice during the daytime and in the evening. I'll turn it over to Brent, and we'll get working on awards.
Just staying at the mic, I think everybody can hear me. I don't want to talk in that thing.
Hello, hello?
All right. During Fire Prevention Week, the Fire Department visited six elementary schools, and we spent roughly 30 hours with over 1,100 students, teaching them fire safety and prevention. Our goal was to make a lasting impact on these young students to learn how to prevent fires in their home and how to be safe. This year's fire prevention poster contest had over 500 entries, and the rules were simple and clear. The contest is open to all students attending elementary schools in grades K through five within the city of North St. Paul. The theme for the poster, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, must be on the poster, and all posters must be original. There are three categories, kindergarten in first grade, second and third grade, fourth and fifth grade. Each category has three winners, first, second, and third place. All first-place winners will have their posters entered in the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs Association Fire Prevention Poster Contest, where they will go up against other students from across the state of Minnesota for similar prizes. We have been very fortunate in the past to also have winners at that level, so that's a good thing. Now, we would like to present the winners of our 2022 North St. Paul Fire Department Prevention Poster Contest. And we will start with kindergarten in first grade, and we'll go at the top, or third place. We'll start with Maverick Hansman. And second place, Adam Yang. And our first-place winner in the kindergarten in first grade category was Emma Matheson from St. Peter. All right, next up, second grade and third grade. Third place, Vincent Corey from Christ Lutheran. Good job, buddy. Second place, we have Mackenzie Donahue, and she was unable to attend tonight. So good job, Mackenzie. And our first place for second, second, and third grade was Brianna Simmons. Simmons. Nice job. Nice work. All right, for the final category, it's fourth and fifth grade. And in third place, we have Christian Hall. Nice job. All right, second place is Hadley Geisfeld. Nice job. First place is Joy Yang. So that concludes all the grades. If we want to bring everybody back up, we can do a group photo and move on. Thank you. Yeah, if we can have all the winners come back up, please. Congratulations.
Yeah, can you take all that? I'm going to fix this.
So we do have two, two more presentations. And why don't we go ahead and ask Keith Davis to join us up front? So I do have a mural proclamation honoring Keith, whereas Keith Davis was witness to a portion of a felony domestic strangulation assault, and he bravely attempted to apprehend the suspect prior to the arrival of the North St. Paul Police Department. Whereas Keith Davis pursued the suspect who fled the scene. Whereas Keith Davis assisted the North St. Paul police officers by telling them where the suspect was. Whereas Keith Davis and the officers jumped a fence to get to where the suspect was hiding. Whereas after the officers identified themselves to the suspect and instructed them to stop, the suspect fled on foot with the officers and Keith Davis in pursuit. Who was running faster? Keith, whereas Keith Davis and the officers continued to chase the suspect through an area business, eventually apprehending the felony domestic assault suspect in a parking lot. Whereas due to Keith Davis's alertness and immediate courageous action, a violent felony assault suspect was successfully apprehended. Whereas Keith Davis selflessly put himself in harm's way to assist the North St. Paul Police Department. And whereas Keith Davis extraordinary actions this day helped preserve the safety of our community. Whereas on behalf of the City of North St. Paul, we honor Mr. Davis with the North St. Paul Police Department's extraordinary citizen award in recognition of his courageous actions. Now therefore, I, Terrence J. Furlong, Mayor of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby recognize Keith Davis as an extraordinary citizen of North St. Paul. Thank you, Keith. So the chief has another award for you.
Keith, good to see you again. Yeah, I got to meet Keith on the day of this incident, and he was definitely running faster. I can confirm that. But we really can't thank you enough. That was, that was pretty awesome, that you helped lead to that arrest, and we greatly appreciate it. So we, we got you another award. This is a pretty cool plaque, so it's a summary of the proclamations that the mayor just read on this award as well. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's awesome. Thank you, Keith. So our second one, we have another, this is a life-saving award. If you can bring up Buddy, Buddy Martin? There he is, Buddy. Yeah, right? So this is another proclamation, a lot of whereas. Whereas Buddy Martin heard cries for help on Silver Lake on October 11th, 2022. Whereas Buddy Martin, without hesitation, ran to the scene to discover two people struggling after flipping over in their kayak. Whereas Buddy Martin immediately swam to their location and safely pulled the kayakers safely to shore. Whereas Buddy Martin had the situation under control prior to the arrival of the North St. Paul Police and Fire Departments and the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office Water Patrol. Did you have lunch or breakfast for them? Or wow. Whereas due to Buddy Martin's alertness, immediate response, and courageous actions, two lives were saved. Whereas Buddy Martin's extraordinary actions this day helped preserve the safety of residents in our community. Whereas on behalf of the City of North St. Paul, we honor Buddy Martin with the North St. Paul Police Department's extraordinary citizen award in recognition of his life-saving actions. Now therefore, I, Terrence J. Furlong, Mayor of North St. Paul, do hereby recognize Buddy Martin as an extraordinary citizen of North St. Paul. Thank you so much. We have another extraordinary award.
Buddy, can't thank you enough. Yeah, the Fire, Fire Chief Mallinger and I were out, out there that day to, to see your fine swimming skills. And you absolutely preserved the lives of others, and we can't thank you enough for that. That was just truly amazing. So thank you. And we, we got you this extraordinary citizen award as well.
Well, this was dynamite. Thank you very much. So thank you all for the extraordinary awards. You know, it just goes to show citizens what they're capable of doing, and going above and beyond. So thank you, thank you both of you very much. You're watching the series for the whole reading, but I don't think you want to see. Okay, I'm gonna go off, a little bit off the agenda here. Brandy, if you could come up, we just want to introduce one of our new employees to the council, to the city. Brian, I don't know if you want to introduce her.
Please.
You're the one that hired her.
Yes, we are lucky to have Brandy. She came here as she was with WSB, and we were able to get her away, thankfully. We have very quality employee. She's fitting in really well. She's been here for a week now. Glad to have her. Wouldn't mind if you introduced yourself and just kind of a little bit of your background?
Yeah, sure. I've been working with you all for the past year in my role at WSB, and I'm really excited to be with the city in a regular full-time position. Love it so far. My, my professional background, I've been a planner for 15 years, and before coming to North St. Paul, I was a consultant for a number of years prior to being a WSB, and I also worked for local government for the city of Rock Island and the city of River Falls, Wisconsin, which is where I live now. But I'm really happy to be back in local government. I feel like it's a good fit for me, and I'm, I'm very, very pleased and excited to be here. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and looking forward to seeing you all.
The EDA was all excited to see you today, so we're real happy to.
Likewise.
Put you on. Glad you're on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. And thank you for staying longer than.
That was actually pretty interesting. I enjoyed seeing the kids get their awards.
That's kind of why I want to keep you here to. No, thank you. So at this time, we do have the consent agenda, and I'll turn over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, November 1st, 2022 workshop minutes. Item B, November 1st, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,172,306.48. HRA claims of $29,434.06. Our energy saving kits. FR building permit report for October 2022. And G, a resolution canvassing the municipal election results of November 8th, 2022 general elections.
So at this time, if a council member would like to remove an item, they can do so at this time?
Like to pull item C, the general claims?
So item C will move down into city business action items as item B. So motion to approve the consent agenda without item C.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public. I do have one. John Schmal, if you want to come up, John? We'd like to keep the comments limited, three minutes.
And I got the buzzer. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. I received in the mail on Monday, no, a surprise in the form of the utility bill. And it wasn't what I've been asking for, for I don't know how many years now, and that is the breakdown by usage on your water, because there's different charges for different usage numbers. But I haven't seen that, and I don't think I'll see it in my lifetime. But anyway, little surprise. It says in the building summary, I've never seen this before. Previous balance, past due balance. I'm a scofflaw. I have a past due balance. Anybody else looked at the bill to see if they had a past due balance? I do. And it's taken out of my checking account automatically, has been for probably 30 years. And it has a little note here. It says, "If the past due balance is not paid, your electric service may be disconnected." Why me? Anybody know? Anyone can find out why?
You can call Brian tomorrow and find out what, have you called the city in regards to it?
No. I should have been notified more than this. I don't know how many, 47 years I've lived here. I've never had that happen. So why me now?
John, I can't answer that.
Okay.
But you can, Brian will be able to help you with, with your question.
Brian can give me a call tomorrow then.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan? I guess we have an answer right now, John. Well, I guess we have an answer right now, John.
As council members are all aware, that we converted over the in-code financial system up into the cloud. We did have an issue in our billing. And I related to our city manager. And that was in one of the zones that we built. I think we built six zones. We lost the backup data for it. So, we had to do a reprint. And on the reprint, it doesn't show the accurate data up in the financial summary part to it. So.
So, what is going to happen with his bill?
All the rest of his bill is accurate.
Yep.
It's just that summary piece.
Yep.
And we certainly can print off something that's not on the North St. Paul letterhead with all the detail if you'd like that. So, we have been taking some calls on that.
Okay.
But it has been corrected in the future. And all the rest of the bills went out accurately. So.
Good. Is that okay, John?
Fine.
Okay. How was hunting? Did you get a deer?
No. The problem was that the wolves outnumbered the deer.
Oh, not good. All right. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody. So, at this time, I believe we have public comment in regards to the unmanned aerial vehicles. So, at this time, are we talking about it? Or are we opening up a public hearing?
Right now, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or on Zoom to chime in with their thoughts about the policy. And then we'll close public comment. And then we'll talk about it as a council.
Okay. So, this time, so is it a public hearing? Not a public hearing, just public comment?
Yes.
So, this time, we're going to open it up for public comment in regards to the unmanned aerial vehicles. If there's anybody who would like to address the council, or if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to address the council. Nobody would like to address the council. So, at this time, close the public comment for unmanned aerial vehicles. Is there any discussion in regards to the unmanned aerial vehicles from the council? Councilmember Thorson?
We just, we talked about this at the previous workshop. But I don't know if there is a plan to get that presentation that the chief gave, that PowerPoint, up on the city website. But I would just request that we do that for communication and information purposes. And then maybe also do some sort of social media posting to raise awareness that this is going to be new and happening and direct them to the website and to the Police Department for questions.
Please, Chief.
Hi there. Hi again. Yeah, we can definitely get it up on the website. I know the policy's on there right now. But we can absolutely get the presentation on the website as well.
I think Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Thorson brought up those in the workshop. So, yeah, I think if we can get it out there more in the public. And I think that was one of the things that was being asked is that, how do we get, how do we get out there more to the public, to the general public?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that policy up there. And then, Councilmember Thorson, you brought up a great idea about just a frequently asked question document. I can absolutely prepare one.
We do actually have an email address dedicated strictly to the drone program. So, if citizens do have questions at any time, they can email that. And then it goes to the chief, myself. And then we can answer those as quick as possible.
Great.
Good. Very good. Anybody else? Councilmember Cole?
Share, since you brought it up, do you happen to know the email address off the top of your head? Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
It is nspuav@northstpaul.org. NSPUAV.
Thank you.
So, at this time, we don't have to make any motions?
The recommended, the staff memo is requesting a motion to approve the North St. Paul Police Policy 606.
All right, let me get that. You know, this iPad thing is. Do we have a page number?
I do not.
Councilmember, anybody got a page number? Oh, I think I got it here.
I can just make a motion that we approve the NSPPD Policy 606 Unmanned Aerial Drone Vehicles.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Second by, motion by Councilmember Thorson, second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. So, items C from the Consent Agenda is now in the City Business Action Items. And turn over to Councilmember Thorson.
So, this is the, you know, the normal bills. And if you scroll all the way down at the very blast page, there's a Premier Bank Credit Card Summary, but it's dated February 8th through March 9th. So, I don't know. I mean, it's in the packet. I don't know if that was a mistake or if we were supposed to be putting the current or previous months in there. But in looking at that, I had a question about a charge. It was on March 4th to Jersey Mike's. I'm assuming that's Jersey Mike's Subs for $118.95. And it says Lunch for PCSC Commission. I'm assuming that's for the Police Civil Service Commission. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was from one of our multiple hiring processes that we have conducted. I don't, I don't remember the date of that one. But that was definitely for lunch to provide them while they were conducting interviews for police officer candidates.
Okay. So, that was a meeting where it was a lengthy, they're here for, you know.
A timely process. Yeah.
Because a normal meeting, they're not buying lunches and, okay.
Correct.
That's all I had question on.
So, the motion is for General Claims of $1,172,306.48.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, reports of City Manager and Departments.
One second, Mayor. The resolution, the canvass, canvassing resolution? No?
That was in the consent.
Oh, I, okay. Great. Thanks.
There is a amended.
Perfect.
So, so reports of City Manager, City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Electric Department will be giving out energy kits again this year, which also includes strings of Christmas lights that they'll be giving out to the public. They'll also be dropping off a couple hundred of them to the food shelf. And these kits will also be given out at the food shelf as well and to the general public. Public Works is getting ready for the winter season. We'll be looking at Colby Hills, Northwood, and Casey Lake. Will they be putting up ice rinks this year? Hopefully, they get good use.
They can actually start flooding them now.
Yeah, really. I got a quick summary update from Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. I thought was kind of interesting. The summary of the work completed by the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District in North St. Paul area during the 2022 mosquito control season. We had a good season for, well, good for humans, anyway, for less mosquitoes being around for below-average precipitation, which helps out quite a bit. Mosquito numbers were down to below the 10-year average, which was good. They treated, what was it, over 300,000 catch basins, over about 130,000 acres worth of treatment. They did find that West Nile virus is trying to make its way into Minnesota. They're active in Minnesota for the second consecutive year. Confirmations of human West Nile virus illnesses typically occur from late summer to mid-autumn. And as of November 2nd, six of them were confirmed in Minnesota, one of them in Hannah Pond County. In 2022, 42 mosquito samples tested in the labs were for West Nile virus. And there were a couple other odd illnesses that they found as well. But it was a good year that they, for the treatment. And mosquito population was down for our area, which was good to hear.
And does Ron count the mosquitoes? Or is that mosquito control?
It's one of his many duties. And that's all I have.
Okay. Reports of Council Commissions and Committees, Councilmember Cole.
We had an EDA meeting today at 3 o'clock in Council Chambers. Not a lot of new business was discussed. We did review some of the old business. And one of the items that was brought up is the discussion around a possible left-turn lane on northbound McKnight into the Target Parking Lot. We continue to work on that as well as look at ways we can beautify the boulevard in this section from Highway, basically Highway 36 North to almost as, well, it's concrete, almost as far up as 11th. So, we discussed that. Next month, next meeting is December 13th at 3 o'clock. We will be reviewing concepts for the parking lot across the street. We have a developer that's going to propose their idea for potential development.
Maybe the marketing piece.
I'll let you run that one. Oh, okay. You don't want to jump in right now? The only, no, the only other thing I'm going to cover off, tomorrow night at 6:30 here in Council Chambers, we have the Park and Rec meeting. And they're going to prioritize and review what they would like to move forward with for 2023.
Okay. I'll just add to the EDA. We're looking at doing a marketing piece for the city in regards to EDA, HRA, Parks and Rec, Arts Council. What else? I think that's all of them. And this would encourage development. It would encourage people, residents moving into the town. So, it'd also be the student-built housing program. Just doing a marketing piece that we haven't done in quite a few years, spearheaded by the EDA. We'd be looking at possibly having the city pay for part of it because the HRA would be part of it, the Police Department, the Fire Department, you know, Parks and Rec, and the Arts Council. So, we're looking at bringing that to probably the next meeting to talk about the marketing piece and possibly adding the HRA, a short meeting to identify some of the funds that could possibly come out of that. So. How was that? Reports, Council Commissions, Councilmember Peterson.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing. But being as the topic was discussed, I'll just provide some brief input on that potential development across the street. I hope also there's thought and consideration into leaving it a parking lot and actually, you know, investing money and turning it into an actual paved parking lot with curbing and landscaping. Because, you know, as this development occurs, parking is an ongoing issue, especially downtown. And this is one of the few parking lots that we do have downtown, although traditionally, it's just been, you know, recycled asphalt. And it's kind of muddy when the weather's not great. And Public Works has used it to kind of dump some downtown snow. But I still think, you know, that that could also help in their problem with having places to dump snow. And think in the winter, traditionally, those parking lots aren't used as much. But I just hope that that's also involved in the discussion about the potential for that and not just to develop it, but to leave it as a municipal parking lot.
General Business, Councilmember Cole.
The only comment that I have is this morning, we had our kickoff meeting for the Community Center. In attendance were myself, Councilmember Wong, City Manager Frandl, sorry. As well as Dr. Walden was in attendance from the, from the city. And we had our consultants in there as well. We just really kicked off the idea of what, you know, what are, what are next steps with the building? And what are we going to, you know, what is the city and the community going to do and determine the value and the asset to the community of as well?
General Business, Councilmember Peterson?
I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing.
I'd like to welcome the council-elect and elect mayor, council, mayor-elect, there we go, there we go, to the chambers here. You know, next year, starting in January, we're going to have a whole new council up here. So, welcome, the three of you. Appreciate you showing up tonight. Also have Veterans Day. This last Veterans Day, we held it at Veterans Park. And we had over 100 people show up. It was a good turnout. We had a couple of the news stations there, one of the newspapers. And Betty McCollum showed up. So, someone, just a great turnout and a nice, a nice program that the Veterans Park put on. Other than that, that's all I have. And we'll make a motion to adjourn. Unless there's something else that anybody missed. Not, moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. We are going to go into our. Take care of. And Dan is gone. City Manager Frandl, can you get a handle on your?
Our staff?
Staff? Did he leave?
Probably ran out for dinner.